I always look at Jenny.
I love you, Amber.
Amber already got the correction stuff.
Very good. Thank you, Jenny. All right, and thanks to Amber. If there are no other questions, then we will... I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Casey.
Second.
And Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the first reading of policy number 6013. And those are always really fun. Do I have to read it? Come on. Do I have to read it more? Thank you very much. You all got a copy?
Yes.
Is there an email? All right. Any questions about that? And this policy deals with...
The cash reserve.
The cash reserve that we talked about quite a bit at the study session. Anything else? Questions from anybody? All right. That will be the first reading. We have, just for the information of our folks here, we read these three times, and at the third meeting, we vote on them. So we have time. They're done once a month for three months. So these will be due in January, probably. No, we can do December. We can do December. Okay. All right. And next, we have a discussion of PERF. Jenny, do you want to share that?
So we currently have PERF for employees. But with the addition of adjunct teachers, they cannot qualify for PERF. So we would be looking to add that benefit for them under our PERF. And we need to expand our language of which employees would fall under the PERF for that benefit. So this would be the addition of adjunct teachers. For example, Logan Young would be an adjunct teacher who's doing our civil engineering, and that would then allow us to provide him that benefit as an employee.
And for those of you who don't know... Most of you know that PERF is Teachers Retirement Fund. PERF is Public. Public. Hello.
It didn't do that for me, what's her?
I know. Aside from the God.
I guess.
But anyways, Public Employees Retirement Fund is PERF. So just...
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Jenny, does this retroactive to the beginning of this?
No. It would kick in. I believe that we figured November 1st would be the first day. By the time we get it signed in and rolled over, it would be November 1st.
Because it's still subject to any source approval as well? To add the addition of our language.
All right.
Does this still have the tenure vestment?
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? At this time, I'd accept a motion that we approve the PERF notification.
So moved.
Thank you, Ethan.
Second.
And Mark. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. The financial report. You want to share that, Shawna?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So first up is our education fund. I'll let Scott catch up. Okay. That would be Amber. I'm sorry. Amber did that. So our receipts for the education fund for the month of September are $1,064,220.34. Our year-to-date receipts are $9,494,696 even. And then our monthly expenses are $966,541.61. We did do a $150,000 transfer between education to operations. We were going to do $300,000, but given that we've got a three-pay month coming up in November and some other unexpected expenses, I held back on the other half just to make sure that we were going to be okay in both funds. So that leaves us with the appropriation balance of $2,924,941.81, which we have spent 23 and 1/4 percent, or 3/4 of a percent. And then that leaves us with $9,989,220.19. And the ending balance for the fund is $390,174.52. Our debt service fund. As we've reseeded in, our LIT money, which was $7,237.92 for the month, that leaves us with year-to-date receipts of $2,71,507.7. Our appropriation balance for our loan payments remaining are $1,539,195.25. We spent 47.48%. Our year-to-date expenses are $1,702,687.75. That was for the first round of debt payment. And then our cash balance is $1,833,897.77 that will be spent in December. And last is the operations fund. And this one, our receipts were $7,371.61. We did our monthly transfer in at $150,000. And our year-to-date receipts then are $3,385,743.70. Our month-to-date expenses were $335,569.32, with an appropriation balance of $1,786.90. And that's 35.05% of our net appropriations. Our year-to-date expenditures have been $3,310,774.10, leaving us a balance of $102,915.2.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any questions from the board regarding the financial report? Any questions from the community regarding our financial report? If not, I will accept a motion that we approve the financial report as shared.
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny.
Sorry.
Thank you, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we move on to the claims. We have claims and payroll. I missed a payroll. Claims, with claims totaling $717,279.31. We got that already. The world already did donations. We're moving very wrong. I don't know why.
We just approved the fund.
It's just the fundraising.
We just approved.
So who wants to do the payroll donation?
Claims and payroll. Sorry. It's all right. It was your turn. I messed up last time. Okay. Claims totaling $717,279.31. Any questions or comments from the board about the claims?
No, ma'am.
Nobody. And we also have payroll totaling $1,076,468.58. Any questions about that? Everybody want to get paid? That's how that works. Okay. All right. Any questions from the community? At this time, I will accept a motion that we approve the claims and payroll.
So moved.
Thank you, Ethan.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have donations. And I did check. You haven't updated anything, Amber. Have you? Good deal. All right. That's good to know. Today's donations. RMS fax class received an unknown amount that included six pounds of meat and buns for the Robert Bobby Dell. Or donated by Robert Bobby Dell. And we appreciate that, Mr. Dell. RHS Civil Engineering Class received $1,100 for the grade laser for the classroom. And that is from the Heidi Family Foundation. So we're very grateful for the Heidi family. RHS Students, $300. I messed up. Clear back to the beginning. At the beginning, it's the fax class. Didn't see... Oh, I did say those things. Sorry. RHS Students, $300 for Hugh O'Brien Leadership Training, and that is from the Optimist Club of Rochester. And RCSC Columbia School, $320 for food service accounts overdue from the Rochester High School class of 1963. And very grateful for that. We often have families who can't do it. And we have wonderful people who donate and make that happen for us. The total for the donations comes to $1,620.0. And at this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the donations as submitted.
So moved.
We got a Mark, and we got a Jenny.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. And moving on to staff... What? Oh, we have a motion. Yeah, you're right. All right. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next on our agenda is the personnel report. And I will read these and try very hard not to butcher names, but that's always one of the challenges I have when I read some of these. The way this works is that we will... I will read the entire personnel report. And then after that is read, I will ask for comments from the board. And then if there are any comments from anyone in the gallery on this agenda item, I will go through the list, and hopefully I got these in order. I have two pages or three, Amber?
Yeah. That should be three.
One, two, three. And we stepped or something. Did you see me drop on? You're very... Yes, it is. Thank you very much. All right. So I will first read through the personnel report. Recommendations for Columbia School. Heather Holloway changed to subteaching position per her request. Lilian Scott, kindergarten instructional assistant, hourly rate $14. For Rochester Middle School. Lola Bradley, long-term sub for Mrs. McSherry from '10-21-24 to '12-20-24, daily rate $140. RHS Fall Intercession. Isaiah Schaefer, math teacher, hourly rate $34.21. Bryn Wilson, ELA teacher, hourly rate $35.60. Deb Wolford, math special services, hourly rate $56.91. RMS Athletics. Billy Newton, 7th and 8th grade volunteer coach. I assume that's basketball? Billy, I know you're here.
Yes.
Thank you. Couldn't help but send those people. Who did this? You did this? Uh-huh. All right. TJ DeBois, 7th and 8th grade volunteer coach. I assume it's the same thing, basketball?
Correct.
All right. TJ's here?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on. RHS Athletics. Winter coaches. Swimming. Stephanie Brown, head coach, stipend $4,500. Erica Abbott, assistant coach, stipend $2,100. Matt Steininger, assistant coach, stipend $2,100. Bryn Wilson, assistant coach, stipend $2,100. Carmen Reeves, volunteer. Apigale McCarter, volunteer. Lola Brady, volunteer. Lindsay Bartsch, volunteer. And this is?
Girls' basketball.
Girls' basketball. Thank you. It faded out on me. Joe Burress, head coach, stipend $7,860. Isaac Schaefer, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Jacob Nye, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Joe McCarter, volunteer assistant coach. Colt Meadows, volunteer assistant coach. Zach Deschawn, volunteer assistant coach. Brooke Topper, volunteer assistant coach. Boys' basketball. Rob Malco, head coach varsity, stipend $7,860. Rex Reinhold, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Shawn Kelly, assistant coach, stipend $3,900. Wilson Lee, freshman coach, stipend $3,900. Luke Smith, volunteer assistant coach. Mike Malco, volunteer assistant coach. Abby Overmeyer, volunteer assistant coach. Becky Lee... Spam found me even here in the meeting. Becky Lee, volunteer assistant coach. Lucas Malco, volunteer assistant coach. Joe McCarter, volunteer assistant coach. Alec Garrick, volunteer assistant coach. Alec Holland, volunteer assistant coach. 24-25 wrestling coaches. Tristan Wilson, head coach, stipend $4,350. Bryce Roberts, head assistant coach, stipend $4,350. Damek Beck, assistant coach, stipend $3,928. JD Howard, assistant coach, stipend $2,000. Abram Farara, assistant coach, stipend $3,000. Brady Beck, volunteer. Derek Holloway, volunteer. Sarah Wilson, volunteer. Hayden Prater, volunteer. Drew Sailors, volunteer. Marshall Fishback, volunteer. Noah Swango, volunteer. Wade Schaefer, volunteer. Jacob Schroeder, volunteer. Aaron Swango, volunteer. Eli Swango, volunteer. Ethan Holloway, volunteer. Grayson Garb, volunteer. Jayden Geller, volunteer. Alex Demming, volunteer. We also have the resignation of Kyla Woodcox. She resigned effective 10/18/24 from Columbia... What's a D V? Developmentally delayed. Pretty good. Thank you. Okay. That concludes the personnel report. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the board regarding the personnel report?
I have a clarified question on the process because obviously there are many people here that want to speak. My understanding from past practice, and Lauren can correct me or guide this, we welcome comment on the agenda item of the people who are listed. Is that correct? Or just the agenda item in general?
Comment can be had from the public on any topic.
Related to the personnel report.
On any topic that somebody from the public would like to address with the school.
Thank you for clarifying.
So I have these in order of when you signed in. And if you would like to speak on this topic, I ask you to just come forward so we can all see you. And first person is Darla Beck.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Darla Beck. My sons have been in the Rochester Wrestling Program since they were just little guys. And I just want to take a few minutes to share a letter that was written by the former head wrestling coach to their wrestlers and their families. Wrestlers and wrestling families, first, congratulations to your new head coach, Tristan Wilson. Coach Wilson and his staff will give you great effort and coach your kids well. I ask you to be patient with them as they navigate their new roles. The wrestling program has many moving parts and roles to fill, and the first-ever IHSAA girls' program starts Monday. Let them get their bearings before anyone asks what's next. All wrestlers, I have seen your posts, your texts, messages, and talked to many of you in person. I do not care if you are male or female, six years old or 16-year-old. The best wrestler in our program or the worst. I do not ever want to hear I'm not wrestling if Coach Garb is not our coach. Our program was built on and has thrived to overcome adversity, being tough, working hard, doing the right thing, and picking yourself up when things don't go your way. So while you think you're being loyal to me, you're not. You're weakening the program and doing the opposite of what you know to be right. Wrestle. If your coaches can swallow their pride and go against everything they believe in to coach you, then by God, you can do the same. These guys are sacrificing more than you will ever know. The best way to beat them is to show up, work hard, thrive. Average people hate that. Don't be average. Wrestle. If you need me, you know where to find me. I don't need a title to be a coach. This is just one example of why the former wrestling coach is so important to all of us. We want to support Coach Wilson with what he needs. And he needs and wants the former head wrestling coach to help him continue this great program, to help his staff continue to succeed, and most importantly, to help all these kids in the program succeed. We are all standing here today because we know and have seen the impact that the former head wrestling coach has had on our kids and how he has built a successful program over the years. You won't see a community standing behind just any coach. That should tell you something about this former wrestling coach. My personal experience is looking at the impact this coach has had on my sons. My boys have grown up with this coach and his staff, and most of their lives have been spent in the wrestling room with all of them. This coach played a key role in helping my boys become who they are today. We know that Tristan Wilson needs him. And I look at all these young kids who love this program, want to grow up and be successful wrestlers. They need him too. We want to support Coach Wilson with what he needs to be successful in this program, and I hope that you'll see this too. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla, for the comments. Next, we have Lori Simpson.
Good evening. Hope you can all hear me. I am here on behalf of my son Garb and our entire Simpson family. I'm going to read a letter that Garb has sent to me. He's living in Texas right now, so he's not able to be here tonight. He said, "Hello, my name is Garb Simpson. I am a 2011 Rochester High School graduate and alum. I spent 14 years in the Rochester Wrestling Program under the former head coach. I started my wrestling career with him at the age of four, all the way through my senior year. After my high school career, I went to Manchester University and wrestled there as well. I now reside in Texas. So I am not able to make the meeting tonight in support of the new head wrestling coach who is also a Manchester University graduate and alum. Given my relationship to the program and with the former head coach, as well as in support of the new head coach, I wanted to give some words of encouragement and a prospect into what the Rochester Wrestling Program has instilled in me. Through this program, I learned mental toughness, physical toughness, how to set personal goals, how to work toward achieving those goals, accountability, leadership, forgiveness, as well as many other skills that have translated into real life outside of the wrestling room. Because of my time spent under the mentorship of the wrestling program, I am a proud, supportive, involved father and husband with the ability to support my family. These skills are a direct reflection of the mentorship I received from the former head coach. Many of you may know my story, but for those of you who do not, I wish to share it with you tonight. During my junior year of high school, I made some poor choices. I was suspended from competition near the end of the wrestling season. This was devastating for myself, my family, my coaches, and my team. As a team captain, I had failed so many who looked up to me. My goals and dreams were shattered, and I ended my junior year with a single one-point loss to the eventual state champion and had to sit out and watch someone else accomplish what I had worked so hard for. Following that season, I asked my teammates to allow me back onto the team in hopes of mending my failed leadership.
Lori, you're three minutes.
Yes. Pardon me?
You're three minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing. Tell Garb I said hello.
I will. Thank you.
Next, we have...
Did you sign up?
Okay. Next, we have Paul Denning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening. My name is Paul Denning, and I'm the proud parent of Alex Denning, 2024 graduate Rochester Community High School. I'm truly grateful for the chance to speak before all of you tonight. Our journey with Rochester Community Schools began back when Alex was just a third grade. We enrolled him in a two-week wrestling clinic hosted by the Rochester Wrestling Club. After just two weeks, he was hooked. He joined the Zebra Gold Youth Wrestling Team, and where we first met the incredible coaching staff. Over the years, our family became part of the Rochester Wrestling Community. The coaches played a huge role in shaping Alex, not just as an athlete, but as a person. Sure, winning is exciting, but what really stands out is the invaluable life lessons he learned along the way. How to handle defeat with grace, the importance of respect, even how to serve others through programs like the Rochester Rent Wrestling. As a father, what means the most to me is that Alex learned what a good character truly is. My wife and I laid a foundation at home that having coaches who reinforce those values made all the difference. They became our partners in raising our son. Alex has to be transferred to Rochester before his eighth-grade year. He wanted to be challenged in both sports and academics. With the strong relationships we built, it was an easy choice for us as a family. Alex craved coaching, competition, and mentors who would invest in him. I want to take a moment to commend Rochester Community High School. We've made so many wonderful memories here, witnessing some amazing competitions. The hard work and dedication of administrators, teachers, coaches, staff, and parents truly deserve recognition. We feel honored to be part of the RHS community and see firsthand the positive impact your efforts, everyone here, have had on our students and athletes. Alex's story is one we love to share, and it highlights the incredible dedication of the coaching staff. Yes, wins matter. Nobody likes to lose, but emphasized here is the character that counts far beyond the math. As a Connecticut native who moved here to be near my wife's family, I often wished I had a youth program like Rochester's growing up. The wrestling coaches generally care about the kids and their development. Now, I'd like to share a few words from Alex, who is currently attending the Citadel, the Military College of South Carolina. I quote, "I've been through the previous head coaches' wrestling practices, which set the foundation for making the challenges icy today much easier. The previous head wrestling coach is one of the main reasons I decided to go to military school. He has prepared me to be challenged and not take the easy road." Thank you all for your time this evening, and a huge thank you to everyone in this community. The Denning family will always be grateful for the impact you've had on our son's life and the guidance and influence of their previous wrestling coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Wish Alex well next time.
Thank you.
Angela Miller.
I'll wait until later.
Later. Kelly Garb.
First, I'd like to start by thanking the coaches who are being approved tonight for each one's sport. I see a lot of names up there. People who I know will be very devoted. As you are embarking on another season, and so is your family, I would just like to explain a little bit about what that means to be a coaching family. I did a little math. I hope it's right. I figure during season, if you practice two and a half hours a day, six days a week, for 16 weeks in season, that's 240 hours. Meets, usually about three hours, times about eight of those per season, 24 hours. Tournaments, 10 hours, conservatively, 14 of those per season, 140 hours. In-season hours, that's 404 direct hours with athletes. Now, that's just in-season, right? Those of you who know the former coach know that he was not an in-season coach. So 25 years of coaching. 25 years of coaching. In-season hours, that's 10,100 hours. If you think about the fact that he didn't stop when wrestling season stopped, I figure that's probably easily doubled. So what does that mean to a family? That's 20,000 hours that he spent investing himself in other people's kids. He missed some first steps. He missed some first steps. He missed some first words. He missed a lot of important things at home, and your coaches and their families will too. Rochester Community benefited greatly from that coaching and from the whole coaching staff. They've benefited and transferred students, increased enrollment, good PR. A community that comes around a sport like this in a small school, you don't get anything better than a full gym for a wrestling tournament on a Wednesday night. You don't get anything cooler than that. We know how much this district has benefited from him. So my question is, at the end of the day, when just like that is over, is there a way that we can do better? Is there a way that we can do better to say thank you and to honor the 20,000 hours, conservatively, that have been given? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Your heartfelt comments are very appreciated. My next speaker, Gretchen Jones.
So my son plays wrestling, and usually it's like back-to-back. And so I asked him when wrestling starts, and he says that he doesn't know if he's going to do wrestling anymore. He told me about Coach Garth and what was going on with him. And I contacted Garth to find out, for one, if these were true and to give my condolences, because he's been part of his life ever since he's been in the first, second grade. He's an eighth grader this year, so he's not even with Rochester Community High School. And Coach Garth has made such an impact on him that he actually thought about not doing something that he loves. He got hurt in a football game, and we had to end up taking him to the hospital later on. And the doctors wanted to take him off the game for a couple of days, and he didn't want to. And I said, "What do you love more, football or wrestling?" And he told me wrestling. I said, "Exactly. So get well and be ready for wrestling season." And now look where we are. All these students need Coach Garth, and Coach Garth has changed so many people's lives. And in this hometown, there is nothing for these students to do. If they don't have a good wrestling program or a good sport program, they're going to go to drugs. Do you want to see him dead in a couple of years? I know you don't like somebody, but can you at least give it up for the kids? They're the ones that matter.
Thank you, Gretchen. I appreciate your sentiment there.
I hope you really do.
I absolutely do. And I'm sure the rest of the board members will be.
I doubt it.
Next, our last speaker here is Jennifer Branson.
Branscombe.
Yeah, that's right, girl. Forget it.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Branscombe. I'm a 2007 Rochester graduate. I have two younger brothers who are an '09 and a 2011 graduate. I was introduced to wrestling at a very young age, as my brother started around seven-ish, my older brother. I remember Max being in the high school cafeteria when we first started. I watched several kids grow to be amazing athletes. I was a wrestling manager from the beginning of my seventh-grade year till the end of, till the time I graduated. I was also a football manager beginning my freshman year. I am and always will be a supporter of Garth, even though the time he left in 2005, 2006, that wrestling year was rough, as we had a different coach, because he went to go to Manchester College. We then had Rick Troxel, even though we had more in numbers, because my grade didn't want to wrestle with Garth, did not do our wrestling program any justice, as Troxel did not care about grades or anything that did off the mat. So he did not fill Garth's shoes, and it came into checking in with schoolwork, life off the mats, and hobbies. It was a refresher for Garth to come back from my 2006 or 2007 wrestling year, my senior year. My brothers also did not have Garth, as I think he chose family in 2008 and 2009, in the 2009, 2010 school years. But he's still a great guy. He did have young sons back then. And we did have a good coach from Culver at that time. But Garth did not only influence my life as a coach, but as a teacher. In hindsight, he was the best teacher I've ever had. He forced us to teach ourselves the new topic and do the homework, but we would go over the homework the next day. He was always available for questions, but guess what? This is exactly what college did, and no one understood that at that time. The only teacher who prepared me for this type of studying was Garth, and I've always told him thank you afterwards. But this is not always about Garth. He teaches loyalty, teamwork. But it's also for the kids. Don't give up. He's always on your side. And don't let one family ruin it for you. Love you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We've lived, we've lived the dream. We were able to participate in that. Angela Miller, do you want to comment now or at the very end of the meeting?
I'll comment now.
Thank you.
Jennifer Branscombe is my daughter, so I did have boys in Garth's program for just a short while. Phillip, who graduated in 2011, graduated with Garth Simpson. So he had just two years of being coached by Coach Garth and then Coach Holloway. I forget all the others, but I think it developed his life considerably. He became ultra-independent. He could do his own thinking. He became only a few that graduated from Rochester Community Schools that went into the military. And whether, when you think about the military, I mean, he went into the military. Basic training was probably a little easier for him since he had Coach Garth coaching him, conditioning, which he's very good at. His kids are conditioned. I wish all the luck to all the wrestlers. I don't go to their meets. I'm not one that fills up the gym because of some problems, but I follow them in the paper. And I am so glad that he has done so well, and his coaching staff. I mean, it takes an army. The program, the Rent-A-Wrestler program that he started, sure, it was to raise money, to go to camps, which, what did they do? They helped the kids. And you know what else they did? They got these kids out, and a lot of them maybe physical work during the summer, to keep them conditioned, and I'd go in their basement, like I know my son did, drink beer that I did not know that he was drinking, and playing games. That's what he does for these kids in Rochester. And I'm just so sorry, I'm going to be negative now. I wrote all of you an email, and I'm just so sorry. There's so much politics that you ruined. And maybe it's not ruined, the program will go on because of the dedication. I mean, you've read all the volunteer coaches. I mean, it will go on. But for them, it won't. What are you, a junior? Two years he had to coach his son, two years. And you can't even let him be a volunteer coach or an assistant coach. And by the way, I think you should have, instead of just a volunteer coach as a female, you should really get an assistant woman's coach here, because there's enough girls on that team to value that. That's all I'm saying. Coach Garth, wherever you are, I know you might not have believed me that I was a fan, but I'm a fan.
Thank you, Angela. I appreciate you coming forward and sharing about kids. At this time, we need to vote on the personnel report. And once again, board members, any questions or concerns about the personnel report? I will accept a motion at this time.
I move we accept the personnel report as read.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. And now, Mrs. Vance will go through our directors and principals reports. So Mr. Haas, if you'd like to start with your report.
Yep. So we just came off of fall break. We had an intercession over fall break, caught up several credits for our students. Last weekend, we had two runners who advanced to regional, one young lady and one gentleman, Calaway and Javier, so we are excited for them. The football team starts sectional this week. We do host the first round of sectional at home. Chris Hooks will be slaving away on Wednesday, painting the football field, if anybody wants to help. We have the soils team who are going to nationals. They got second out of, I think it was 78 teams. Don't quote me on 78. 62 teams, thank you, Amber. That happens in late April, early May, but I know Mr. Pearson, when I talked to him today, was really excited about that opportunity. He said they were really close to bringing home the spade that he's fired up to win in the next couple of years with his young team. They also have the national convention, FFA does, this week, this later in the week. I think they leave the 23rd to head to the national convention, so those kids are going to enjoy that experience. We are competing for the first time in the Golden Shovel Competition in Indy with our heavy equipment civil engineering kids. As long as we get some safety courses passed here the next day and a half, they sprung on us, so we are working with Mr. Heidi. As you saw his donation, we really appreciated that. And so they're headed there Thursday this week. It's basically the donut schools in little old Rochester competing against each other, as we are one of the few smaller schools that have that option for our kids. We have PSAT, freshman tomorrow, sophomores next day, and juniors the following day. This year, instead of doing it in classrooms, we're going to try and do it in our gym. So thank you to the fairgrounds for donating their tables that we went and picked up today. We appreciate that. Saturday, big day for our marching band. They have the Fall Marching Band Showcase. So we're really excited about that. Then on October 30th, we have the JAG initiation ceremony. If you haven't been a part of that, Mrs. Burris is our JAG teacher. She does a phenomenal job with that as well. And we'll have the fall play on November 22nd and 23rd. We may have a board meeting before that, but I don't want to leave that play out. Progress reports will be here the 20th of November. That'll be before we know it. And then, obviously, November 11th, we'll have some Veterans Day activities going on. So a lot of great things going on at the high school. We did have girls' basketball and girls' wrestling kick off their season today. Girls' swimming starts next Monday, right? And then eventually, the boys are all kicking, and we'll be off and running in the winter. And we're hoping Coach Schaefer comes through. We get to host a sectional championship game here in two Fridays from now. So a couple of big weeks going on for Rochester High School. Thank you. My name is Renee. Continued support. I truly appreciate it. Thanks.
We ended our fall athletic season as well, had a pretty successful season, won a couple of titles in cross-country, got real close in volleyball, got runner-up to Southwood. Had one of our most successful seasons in football, so ended our fall athletics pretty well at RNS. We have taken our first I-Learn checkpoint. That went really well. We met or exceeded the state average in every category, so we're super excited about that. Well, congrats, and thanks for all the hard work of my teachers. We did a couple of fun field trips right before break. Fifth grade went to the Dunes, sixth and seventh grade went to Fair Oaks, sixth grade went to the Berry Side, and seventh grade went to the Hog Side. We did College Go Week, had some successful trivia fun that week. Our PBIS Ball Festival and Powder Puff Game was a lot of fun, and thank you to these two right here for all of their hard work on that. We have fall intercession, 23 Kids Show. That was a big success for RNS as well. Coming up, we have our Halloween Dance, which is a fan favorite with our haunted locker room. So if anyone wants to come, that is November 1st, after school. It's good time. You can go in the haunted locker room if you'd like. We will have a Veterans Day lunch on the 7th. And we did just kick off our Zebra Flamingo You've Been Flocked fundraiser, so watch your yard. You may be flocking zebra flamingos.
Is that, that's all I have. Is that for the school at large or for a specific?
Really student activity, some of the fun things that we like to do to try to fund those things that cost money that we want to continue doing for the kids.
And what exactly should we be looking for?
Some flamingos, yard flamingos that have been painted with zebra stripes. Oh, wow. You can't buy insurance if you'd not like to be blocked. We are selling that insurance.
So is that a contribution for the yard we want to have flocked?
There are all sorts of things you've been doing, yeah, for your yard, yeah, for the right dollar amount.
Send me that for town talk.
Is the I-Learn checkpoint, is this what you guys are piloting this year? Okay. And so this is supposed to line up more accurately with the I-Learn testing?
This is what they're moving to next year.
So forgive me for my brain fog here, forgetting how this works. So will they have to, are they just doing checkpoints along the way? Or do they also have to take the?
There is a summary, like a summative test. This year, it's the same as it's always been, plus we're doing the pilot.
Okay. So this year is the double, then after that will be?
Yeah, so we're told there will still be a summative, but it will be much shorter.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Brum?
Yes, I have from Mr. Schneider as well for Columbia, so I'll do both here. We'll start with Riddle. Third grade had their concert before fall break. That went very well. And Mr. Schneider also talks about Fall Festival that we hosted over fall break. We had around 90 kids come for that. Went well, a little cold and rainy to start, but kids did it mine, and we got it taken care of. And from what I hear, the best hamburgers and hot dogs ever grilled on the face of the planet.
Just chose the worst weather day of the whole year.
Well, we've been very lucky in past years. We've always had beautiful weather. And the kids, they didn't blink an eye. I mean, it was, you know, they were running around.
No, but it was so cold.
Yeah, it was cold, and then it started.
But I sent my daughter with a heavy coat. She chose not to wear it.
As Mrs. Burby stated, fourth grade also did the I-Learn checkpoints for this year. Both Columbia and Riddle, we have our picture retakes this Thursday. So parents, if you want your students' picture retaken, Berdacki's will be doing that. We figured out when photographers say to tell a kindergarten to say cheese, it's cheese, not cheese with a smile. So Dex looks quite funny. He'll be getting redone on Thursday. We'll do our Halloween door hop. Columbia will be doing theirs next week on the 31st, so on Halloween, and so will Riddle, so kids can dress up, and they'll go door-to-door throughout the school and collect some candy before the real night of Halloween. Let's see what else Mr. Schneider has here at Columbia. They've got little zebras basketball starts up tomorrow. The fire prevention with the Rochester Fire Department is on Thursday and Friday. And a shout out to the fire department. They came to Riddle as well, I think, the Monday before fall break. We had our fire drill. They brought the trucks in and showed everything. It was pretty cool. So thank you to the fire department. Continuing with Columbia, Zebra Zone winners visiting a local farm on Thursday. Kindergarten will be going to ID Tech on Friday for the 529 college visit. And November 4th, first grade and kindergarten will be going to a show at the Honeywell Center. And that wraps it up. Any questions for Riddle or anything I can pass on to Snyder? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Shane Hall?
Before break, me and the EL teacher, Mrs. Honeycat, went over to Logan to do a site visit for EL to see primarily what they were doing over there for the kiddos that are brand-new into the country, very little English, and more of a sheltered classroom-type situation. So, you know, just taking some feedback from that. Got grants submitted over break, so those are off my plate. Got some trainings coming down the road for my specialized teachers, and that's kind of where I'm at right now in the year. But I appreciate all your support.
Mr. Reimel?
Not much in transportation. I'm just busy week getting winter, getting ready for winter. Maintenance had coming down for a campaign. Went through every bus. Updated ECMs. Still working on a few, but owner warranty is real close. Other, got a new driver hopefully Thursday. Step in, fill in a little bit of the gap on subs and. and another night. It's all going on transportation.
Mr. Ballard?
Maintenance department, we're working on winterization. We've already started. Boiler PMs are already done. So schools are good for the winter. Started doing winterization for the sprinklers, the softball field. We've got that done. And then baseball field, we're gonna be doing that. Then getting stuff ready for winter plowing and all the outdoor things. The guys are really looking forward to getting a break from mowing. Yeah, I know they're, they spend a lot of time mowing, mowing all the properties. So they do appreciate everything that the board does to support us and the schools. So we thank you.
Mrs. Buckles?
So we have received in our 25-26 contracts through our NISC, which is our co-op. And this is for our Gordon Food Service, Deans, and Commercial Foods that we will be looking at renewing. Next Wednesday, Riddle Elementary will be participating in lunch with what they call the Great Apple Crunch. It's in cooperation with the National Farm to School and National Apple Month. And the Purdue Extension Office will be in there with us for that. Verification has started of the free reduced applications. That usually gets completed about the mid-part of November. Our annual financial report, or our AFR, is also in the process of being finished by November 1st. At all four locations during our intercession, we fed all students that were in the building, breakfast, lunch. And at Columbia, they also received a free snack. We have the Kewanas Turkey Dinner coming up. With this year, we have the pleasure of making the turkeys for them. Normally, they would come in from Rochester Meat and Deli. And that's pretty much about it for now. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stone, if you would like to give a rundown of our athletic weight in the schools.
Yeah, so we're wrapping up the fall season, like Mr. Haas said. So we've got cross-country running in the regional this week and then football sectional starting. But the rest of the fall has wrapped up. And then we're moving into the winter with girls' wrestling and girls' basketball starting. So just getting the, getting ready for the wintertime. I'm ready to be out from outside and ready to be inside, so getting that moving. But when it comes to Coach Wilson, he's been on staff now for seven years. And it has been very evident through our process of finding our next coach that this is who our kids want. He is very important to them. He means a lot to them. We have had so many different meetings where they have come to us and said, Coach Wilson is so important. We get that, right? And so I'm really glad to have him on staff. I think he's gonna keep our program exactly where it's at and just keep that train rolling. So really excited to have Coach Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, anything you'd like to say?
As he was talking, I was not mentally preparing.
Congratulations.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the group? Board members? Anybody else in the community have something you'd like to share?
I am a homeschool mother whose son also attends Rochester High School. He is a hybrid student, we'll call it that. And I speak for a lot of families in the last decade who have decided that the way that public schools are handling themselves, they can do it better. And they have decided to remove their children from public schools and have succeeded in teaching their children at home in an effort to bring sports back to our children, trying to create, what do I want to say? A symbiotic relationship where they can still have the good things. It is disappointing to see two schools now handle situations that their communities at large were not in agreement with. And it's disheartening because I believe that we as adults and communities can do better than that. Faculty members don't have to resign or retire with bitterness or difficulty. There can be a better way. But there can't unless somebody steps up and say, I think we need to take another look at this. Unless that happens, no progress will be made. And though I'm appreciative that the program will continue, my son is sitting out this entire year just so that he could be part of this. And for this to happen immediately after and learning some of the details where semantics is what dictates what happens and can be interpreted according to whose desires or specific people's desires, it's disheartening. And I just want to challenge everyone to raise the bar a little higher and let the families in the community know that your schools are going to treat people with respect and that the faculty members will retire with respect and that we can give that same example to our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who has a comment? Yes, or?
With girls' wrestling sanctioned this year, will they be hiring a girls' head coach?
Do you need to speak to it? Go ahead. The way it's been approved, we're treating it the same way we treat our cross-country and our track program. So we have one head coach who is in charge of both programs. So Coach Wilson is our head wrestling coach for the varsity program. So he's in charge of both the boys and the girls.
Is that per ISHA guidelines?
Yeah.
There's no guidelines that say you have to have two separate coaches. No, so.
What about the wrestling facilities? My understanding, the girls can no longer practice with the boys.
To my understanding, that's not a rule. But we typically do separate because of overall numbers anyways. Like as of now, in our final forms, we have roughly 45, 46 wrestlers between the boys and the girls at the high school. Doesn't really fit smoothly in our wrestling room. It's a little tight in there when you stick 46 kids in. So we already have, you know, kind of put that hybrid together where we send some to the auxiliary gym and we're able to put mats down in there.
Okay, so if you've got 46 kids and you have half of the varsity in the wrestling rooms per se, JV in the gym, and where are you with the girls?
No, the girls typically are going in that with either in the auxiliary gym or they're in the main wrestling room.
Well, I could be totally wrong. Please check on it. But I believe being sanctioned this year, girls are not allowed to practice with the boys. And I would think Title X, is that correct?
I don't know.
Excuse me. You'd have to hire a specific girls' coach. I believe that's the new rule being sanctioned this year.
I'll gladly look into it and make sure we're correct. Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Anyone else before we adjourn?
So you're not bringing Guard back at all? Not even as a volunteer? You don't even have to ban him? He wants to be here for our kids.
I'm not on the, I'm not on the list, so they can't do anything about that.
Okay, sorry, I don't know how the things work. I just wanted to know.
Because for this winter season, have already been approved and seconded.
So Guard won't be here this season whatsoever. So we're gonna have to look, maybe hope that he's part of the coaching system in 2025? 2026?
At this point, I'm not making any promises on what the future looks like.
Oh, I understand that. But for the 24, 2025 school year, there will be no Guard.
You know, I don't know what the exact parameters have that have been set around that. And so I can't speak freely.
And you're here for our kids. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I am here for your kids.
He was talking about cross-country, having the same coach. Have any of you ever gone to a wrestling match? New, maybe, or tense? Any of you? School board, one time, maybe? Okay. Would you want your daughter, who is fanatic about wrestling, practice with the boy? That is why they want, since it's sanctioned, two different areas of practice.
I agree with that.
I mean, it's only common sense.
I think it's important to understand when the girls' wrestling was sanctioned, we were told as a board. And I realize none of you were at that meeting, so you didn't hear the conversation. But all of us at that time were like, great, finally. We've had lots of girls interested in wrestling, lots of girls who've been involved in the program. Finally, they're being recognized by IHSAA.
Yeah.
So then, then, I'm sorry, my turn. Then we asked Superintendent Vance, how does this work? What are the next steps? How do we make it official? She says, we haven't done it, you know, IHSAA hasn't done this for a while. And so I think there's a form. I will get it, you know, we'll get it to the AD, we'll get it to, you know, the coaches and we'll see exactly, you know, how this program is going to fit in. The next meeting, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, board members, the next meeting, we had the form filled out for girls' wrestling. Great. All of us looked at the criteria that, you know, the coaches from the previous season had said, this is what we need, these are the coaches we need, this is how the program will work. And I'm not even sure any of us really even had a question. We were like, hey, that's great. Fabulous. Motion second approved. Awesome. Get the door running. If there are requirements, Mr. Stone already said this, if there are requirements by the IHSAA that require a girls' coach, if there are requirements by the IHSAA that require separate facilities, if the coaches come to us and say, our student athletes are not comfortable, our students' athletes might need something a little different than what we have been doing. Nothing is going to change for as far as I understand from what's been done the last few years. But if the students' athletes go to the coaches and say, I think we need something different, then this board is always open to that conversation. Nobody has ever said, we are absolutely not going to do this. It's not even been in the spectrum of the conversation. So forgive me for being a little frustrated with this conversation, but I was at those meetings. I remember what I said and what I said was awesome. I am ecstatic that IHSAA is finally, finally saying that the girls' wrestling is, should be out front just like the boys. That's my answer to the question on girls' wrestling. Please, coaches in attendance, if as you go forward, please do not be shy about talking to this board about what you need for girls' wrestling, for any sport. To that matter, I'm just pointing at girls because we're brand new at this point in the IHSAA's eyes, but.
You all have access to our emails through the district website. Did you sign up to be a speaker, Hunt?
Earlier.
And our rules are that if you've already spoken on a topic?
Yeah, you cannot speak again if you've already spoken. And I didn't.
It's not even about Guard. I can only have talked once about one thing.
What's your question?
Well, my question was, but that wasn't even the answer to the question. You were getting angry stating, yeah, we've talked about it. But here's my concern, and only from a woman, and also because I've been told by an admin of our schools that you're not supposed to listen to kids, kids lie. Do we have a woman coach who can, or assistant, or any manager, whatever, that can sit and watch a guy and girl wrestle so that if, if, it's a big if, that girl or a boy says, they sexually harassed me, we have a witness saying, no, it did not happen? That would be my concern. Because, once again, kids talk, you're not supposed to listen to them, they lie. And I was told that by an admin when I had a complaint. So what are we gonna do with that? I mean, that's only my concern. I agree. Girls' wrestling has needed to go a long time ago as a sanctioned sport. But other than that, that would be my concern. It is a very intimate sport.
This is public comment, this is not public debate.
I know. I'm just asking a question right now.
And we're not, we're not allowed to respond.
Did you tell me that I can't speak again?
I agree. I'm on the volunteer list. So there is no response. I'm sorry to ask an answer.
So you can keep eyes on three groups of wrestlers and make sure that there's not inappropriate touches. Or girls don't wrestle boys. Yes, I agree with that too.
No, no, no. They don't.
They don't. Yes.
Hey, hey, hey. The girls are not wrestling the boys in season.
Okay.
It is not allowed in, so they will not practice together.
I promise, I promise.
I have made a motion to adjourn by the second, seconded by Jenny. The motion has, or all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you all for your time.